I'd like to open the meeting with the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the right, in the vast space of America, and to the record for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you first, do you have any other genes?
I must have all got it, I'm hoping I might get that.
What mine? Anyone?
I ran my copy, make sure I got it.
Just don't be a bad guy.
Thank you.
First thing on the agenda is Amanda Lasher, so this is the Board of Public Finance, am I correct in that?
Board of Finance.
Okay. This is an annual acceptance of our deposit funds, where they go and how they're handled.
Correct. So, here this evening, I'm going to ask, we call to order the annual Board of Finance meeting, and we start off by electing the President, which has to be you guys, so, that's right. And then, the treasurer's always the secretary, so, and then I give you guys the report for the end of the year. President, do you give that to? Well, that's the policy.
This is for investments.
Yes, those.
You have three other?
Yeah, one.
Are you ready?
Hold it down. Yes.
Yeah, now that's happening.
How are you working?
Okay. So, in front of you, you have the end of the year balances for the banks. What we have in best, and then you'll see, for the year 2022, as far as the interest earnings, was a total of $73,504.03.
Okay, so Amanda, do we need to organize and then accept these reports? Is that what we, our action we need to take?
Right, that's the end of the Board of Finance.
Okay. So, the first thing we need to do is open the Board of Finance meeting, and with that, make nominations for President. Do we have to have all officers, Vice President of that, or is that President?
No, just supposed to.
I nominate Randy Clating.
For President, at Board of Finance?
He's gotta be one of us, don't he?
Right.
Yep.
I can nominate Randy, but that's fine, so.
Don't matter to me.
It's okay with me, I'll second it.
You got it, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, three zero. So, that's yours, Randy.
Okay. You got any other comments on?
I just like to point out that all of the banks that we deal with at Tax Pay, during May and November, they take tax payments at no charge, so I'm very grateful for, they do this as a courtesy. And then, also, last year, we opened up an account for payroll, and with the new allowance system, we're looking to better streamline it, so basically, it'll just come in and out, it's gonna be a wash account, basically. So, we're looking to do that, hopefully, by March, if that's set up right. That's all I have.
The only comment I would have, Amanda, is that if, I know some of the local banks, they rename accounts and then will pay a higher interest, because we're currently on a higher interest curve, and if you don't take those actions, a lot of times, you see yourself at a micro fraction of an interest payment. So, just be aware of that, if you need to, to make the switch, or rename them, or whatever.
Right, and there is one bank that does not give us a very good rate, and I've been fighting that battle for two years now, so, but we're looking to fix that, too, so.
Are there any other questions for Amanda? I need a motion to approve the finding.
I'll make a motion, a second.
A motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All both saying aye. Amanda?
All right, thank you, now we have the adjourned this closing.
Yep, closing.
Need a motion to close the Board of Finance meeting?
It's on move.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing up is approval of our agenda, do we have any corrections, modifications, or?
We do have an additional.
Okay, and what is that, Chris?
Regarding COVID policy.
Okay, and where do we choose to put that in?
Do we wanna put it under, under five, do we wanna go ahead and hit it under five?
Why don't we put it down, it's like below, where you're at here, on sixes.
Okay, so H, put an H, COVID policy.
Any other additions or corrections? Hearing none, I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
I'll make that motion, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, three zero. First thing up is Mr. Tony Billow, Oxon Road. It's all ungood, let's see how it works.
I've just got some issues with the road that I live on, it's a 1.7 mile roughly driveway. I have been to County Garage several times, of issues with the road, and it just seems like nothing's getting done. The bridge that I have to cross to get to my house is literally falling away from the bank, the bank is sliding off into the creek. Occasionally, they'll bring some rock back there, maybe spread it, maybe they've graded, and if I stop it and ask them, they might take care of it, they may not. It has to snow minimum of six to eight inches before they'll even run a snow plow back there, otherwise, I scoop the plow with my tractor. I'm about talking about, I'm a taxpayer, too. I think, you know, if I wanna maintain it, send me a check, I'll do it, cut me a check, I'll be glad to take care of it. But that's not my responsibility, it's technically a county road, and not only that, the school bus crosses that same bridge that goes back to my house, if it falls in with a bunch of kids on that bus, then what? So, I mean, it's a big deal to us, because we live on a dead end road. What can we get done about it?
Yeah, I looked the road up, and maybe you can clarify this for me, I was looking for property owners, and I couldn't find you listed where you actually had.
I'm at Morgan Wayne Trumbos Place.
Okay, that, and that's the name it's under?
That's the name it's under, yes.
It's at the very end, I know where it's at.
It's a two-story house, seven living quarters, I live upstairs.
Okay.
Did the county install that bridge?
In 1988, that bridge was built.
Do you know if there's been any maintenance on that bridge since?
I've got all the records, I won't turn you that.
Okay.
I do have a video that I did take, it's on my phone, hopefully you're interested to see it or not, but it shows the concrete foundation that's on my side of the road, or on my side of the bridge, is actually starting to pull away from the steel structure, where the concrete's supposed to sit, or, excuse me, the steel beams are supposed to sit on the steel structure, or the concrete structure, I'll get that right here.
And how many families live on this road? How many residences are there?
Five.
Five families?
Yes, six, counting us, I mean, of course, we live at the Trumbos residence, but we live upstairs, so that would be technically six.
So, in other words, they're still there, and you're just living upstairs on there?
Yes, they live downstairs, we live upstairs.
Okay.
On the bridge, has it deteriorated in the last year?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, the bank is literally falling away from the edge of the road. The creek has gotten up enough to where, in certain places, just downstream from the bridge, it has tore the bank away from, right next to Kenny and Jane Flamien's driveway, which they did bring some riprap out there and dump on there, and we get a lot of water down to there, that creek is pretty crazy, so, who knows how long it'll stay.
I guess I have a question for Steve, is that on the annual bridge inspections, Steve? Yes, you got it, okay. Annual bridge inspected every?
Three years. Every two years.
Every two years, we get engineering come in and inspect, we got 100 bridges in this county, so it gets inspected every two years.
Well, my main concern is, not only is it a one-way bridge, and it's falling in around it, but why is it an S curve like that? In five-mile radius from this bridge, or at least five bridges that are built exactly the same way, they have an S curve. You go on and you curve, you come off of and you curve. Is that a particular property line is?
Way back then, probably.
Yeah. It was the goat path they followed, they did a lot of these things.
Apparently.
Yeah.
Okay. Other than the maintenance part of the driveway, or the whole road, that's all I got, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, if you wanna come up and shed some light on this?
This is a copy of the bridge inspection report, on that bridge.
Thanks, Steve.
This is a copy of what we've done on that road, and that bridge, in the year of the last year, 2022. Also have some pictures I took, January 2nd, if you guys wanna look at them. The bridge does have a curve on each end.
And this was in '22?
That was, yeah, that was this year, January.
Oh, '23?
January 28th. I measured that road, 1.2 miles.
Which part is supposed to be?
I think he's probably coming in from, he coming in from here?
Yes, that's coming in from Branchville Road.
Is this where it's, so?
Where he, I think where he's talking about is falling away is here, which that's way off our right of way. We've got a 30-foot right of way, which is 15 foot from the center of the road. When he talked with the grudge.
Hear me, the rest of us back in, that's important.
He was out there in March 7th, last year, and talked to me about the bridge, and said he's got a bigger problem, he's having trouble getting through there, and he talked to me about trees in the creek, and trees in the creek, we can't do nothing about that, so far, right of way. We put some riprap along, and concrete along that, there, before he gets to the bridge, or back past the bridge, was his place, a couple of years ago, when the property owner didn't like it, he called me, threatened to turn us into I.D.M. and D.N.R., whoever else, said, told us to stop, he didn't want that concrete, that riprap along that creek.
Somebody called you there about that?
Yeah, threatened to turn us into I.D.M.
So, why do you own that, wasn't me?
No, I'm not with the property owner, but on the property there, the bridge. I'm not saying his name, but that's, it was the property owner. I made a very clear, he didn't want any more stuff dumped along there, so we have not dumped anything along there. What he's talking about, the road that's falling away from the bridge, you can see on our report here, I've got it on here, we worked on that. Back years ago, that bridge was built in 1988, and the contractor back then, didn't put nothing at the ends, the bridge, keep the rock from falling down, we've had this problem, several different bridges around the county, before we've had to go back and give it a, come a hole through the bridge, we have to go out there and dig it out, put the riprap in it, that was the case here, and we worked on it, too, these days, and then again. After he was out there in December, we worked on it again after that, we had worked on it before that, but then, we had to go, it sunk in a little more, we had to go back and work on it again. We put, uh...
So, you worked on the other bridges that were built like this?
We all.
And you put riprap on?
Yeah.
And, did you put riprap on this one?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that problem, I think it's...
Well, I said, the problem is that it don't last, I mean, it just eats it right all down the stream.
Well, we...
I know what you're saying, I mean, it just, it don't stick around, you can put five ton in there, or 20 ton in there, and within three good rains, it's gone.
And when he was out there with the grudge in December, he said that, when we grade that, grading, we don't grade that road. I did some checking on that, and found out what happened was, the grader was on the, they had that Branchville, Fort Branchville on the gravel road, and broke down. So, that's why that road wasn't graded that time, and you seen.
It had a black car?
No. It had motor problems, I wasn't the black car. No, it had engine problems. That grader was an earlier grader, which you guys know what problems have happened to that. Our other old grader up there, has been sitting over at Poson Junction all summer, but we can't find the parts for it. We got everybody in the country trying to find some parts for it. So, we've been down two graders most of summer, that's all we've been able to drag with, with a tractor and, with a blade on it. It's been dragged twice, and mowed twice, and I can't understand, I can understand if somebody sees you grading your area, your road don't be great, I can understand that upsetting person. But I don't feel like the road been graded in the last, I told him when he was out there, and he was telling me, you know, he wasn't getting nothing done on that road, I said, well, I'll start watching, and make sure that we do. But that ain't, isn't getting missed somehow, because it's, you know, it's possible. So, I look back the records, that's what you got there, is what we had done. We put 192 ton rock on that road last year, which is, I don't know, quite good that went on the bridge, so.
Yeah, right here, is this the total for the year?
Yes.
Okay.
94 tons went on the road, 98 tons were keeping around that bridge.
Okay, so it's 192 tons, I'll get it.
So, what's the solution, Steve, I mean, you kept upping the rock in there, do we need to put concrete, wash it in over the rip, riprap, or something to kind of, wash it out?
We put some bigger stuff in there, that's the last time, and we thought that it would, would still stay in there. One problem is, he was talking about the trees in the creek, and he said they got, he got in trouble, or they told, threatened him for cutting trees out of the creek, well, they did us the same way.
Right, yeah.
We were turning it in up there four or five years ago, to the Forest Service for moving creek rock around in the creek, and they threatened us, give us a fine over that, they didn't, what they threatened to.
You get a lot of threats, don't you?
Yeah.
Well, and I know that you, when you try to straighten the bottom out in the creek or something, so it actually goes better, they will turn you in on that, too, so, I mean, it's a challenge, I know where you're coming from.
Yeah, because that's where you get your wash up, and the creek gets out of the way, and it sends it out of the bank.
Yes, into the bank, and if you could trim it back up and get it directed to the right location, it would be helpful, but if you touch that creek bottom.
Yeah. Wrong part, it's easy, turn it in, then.
Tell cities went through that with Lindy Creek, I mean, it's one of those, I don't know what the solution is to it.
But hopefully, our grader's gonna run a little more often than it did last year, maybe we'll find parts for that other one, and be able to make sure of that, I told Ben, or I told the foreman, I said, make sure, when we're doing something up there, that that road isn't skipped, and he said, oh, I don't think it has been, but it was that one time, for sure.
I do have one question, when it comes to removing stuff out of the creek, and I know Ben already pitched a bit about it, so, what if we go in there, cut it up, to where the water just washes it out?
That'd be your decision, we're not gonna, we're not, we're not gonna go down that road, I mean.
I mean, eventually, we're not gonna make it home, because something's just gonna get washed out, man, if it's gonna come.
It's, like I said, a 30-foot right of way, which gives us 15 foot from the center.
How wide's the bridge?
The bridge is, the road across the bridge, according to the report, is 12 foot, the bridge is 14 foot.
Okay, so in other words, outside of that, we have 16 feet, eight feet on either side of the bridge is the only thing that we've got ability to touch, yeah.
And the bridge report, I mean, the bridge is in, according to the report, it's all in satisfactory condition. So, it's not scheduled to be replaced for a long time.
That was done in '21, the inspection date, will it be done again this year?
It was supposed to have been done this January, but then, though, it's had comments on our, on our bridge inspection, so they have to wait so many days, so I'm hopeful, hopefully, it's gonna get done in February. Our compliance month is in January, and I called up there a couple of weeks ago and talked to that lady, they've got a new lady again over the bridge inspections, and I talked to her, and she said, this document, that you did your, everything that you were supposed to do, because of these comments, we have to give you publicly so many days to comply.
Respond to them, right.
I said, well, well, January being our compliance month, will they just scoot that back? She said, no, when we give you the notice to proceed, you notify all viewers, and when they do the report, then there's a section in there, they have to fill out, you know, to tell us what happened, why it's, why it wasn't done in January.
Do you go out with them, Steve, when they do the bridge inspections?
No.
We don't?
If I get a call about a bridge I go look at, and if it's something that I'm not sure about, I call them, and they'll come up and look at it for me. They don't, they go out, you know, on any different days, they, there's 99 of them right now, it'll be 100 next year, and, you know, they'll come, there's so many, this day and that day.
When the weather's right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll come in, do it.
And in January, it's kinda hard to find good things sometimes, but...
I don't think we have an answer for you tonight, but I, I think we're gonna see what we can do, if there's some way to, to protect, it's in our best interest to take care of the bridge, because we don't wanna build another bridge that's unnecessary.
Just need to reinforce what we have.
Yeah, we just need to make sure it's taken care of, so that's one thing we'll look at, and if Steve, I know he struggled with equipment, we recognize that, and...
The trouble you have is that, because your trailer's longer, you're getting through there, you were talking to me about, City Coach getting through the bridge. Oh, yeah. Well, I tried to call our consultant today, Mark Greeley, with all yours, to see if there's a possibility of us scooting those rails back a little, of course, you gotta stay, you gotta stay within the guidelines, you're liable, somebody runs off the road there.
Right.
So, I want to try to contact him again tomorrow, and, you know, if we could scoot the rails back on the end a little bit, maybe that'll, I mean, we're trying to do something to help with it, but we can't replace the bridge, because, you know, it's in good shape for the place.
And we can't go off a right of way, and manipulate anything.
You've got pictures of the hill coming onto the bridge.
Yeah.
And they don't get the, where the dirt is starting to fall away from the, right here at the top of the hill?
Yeah, that's way off our right of way.
That's where you get threatened, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't, you can't get off your right of way.
Yeah.
We get, we need him, we don't need him in jail.
He's in jail, we're in jail, too, so.
I don't wanna go to jail. We might see like some reinforcement, maybe expanding those rails as much as we could, might help it, but is it gonna keep it from motion? I've been across that bridge, I know. I didn't realize that that's who that class is.
If I get complaints up there, I try, I really try to take care of things, the best I can, but there's situations like right of way, and the things that you, and he'd ask me about cutting a couple of trees there, we'll talk to him, you know, over the bridge, we can't do that without the landowner consent. The trees are his property, if you could get his permission to cut them.
Well, we'll just keep it, and work on it, to see what we can do to make it, make it a better situation.
At that time, I would try to make sure that when we was in that area, that that road didn't get missed, that could've been December. I know it did get missed once, because that grader, but, you know, it's, it's possible, it could've, some other time when we was in the area, but I don't want that to happen, so I'm gonna try to keep an eye on things better up there now.
I think it's kind of mind-boggling, but we got about, what, 250 miles of gravel road here?
Yeah, 250 gravel.
250 miles to maintain, with rock, in the same situations, in other places, what we see right here, so.
Oh, and you're talking about just plowing snow, we, we don't plow gravel roads unless we get a six-inch or better snow, because we do, we just throw, but we had dropped that road just recently, before that snow there, and if we plow it, we throw a rock, and it did, it's gone.
All of the top, the rock.
It cost too much, so it off, it did. If you got a decent layer of rock, you grab roads, and like you get pretty deep snow, they can get traffic, you know, on the rock.
That's true.
All right, thanks.
Well, I got it, usually I got it.
Just stay out of jail.
Nathan, your effects from Indiana Region 15.
Good evening, got some handouts here. Good evening, I'm Nathan Held with Indiana 15 Regional Planning Commission. I'm here really just to give some updates on Indiana 15. Just to let you know, Lisa Galhousen, who's been our Executive Director for the past 17, 18 years, she's been there for 42, 43 years, she stepped down as Executive Director at the end of the year, and as of the first of the year, I've assumed the role of Director, so, I'm trying to get out to all of our six counties and all of our communities to introduce myself. I'm not new, I've been around for 17 years, and worked in most of our communities, but just giving out to introduce myself and reintroduce the organization, I do live in Perry County, so I have a quick, three-minute drive home, which I appreciate. Also, I know that Leah Hawkins was here before Christmas to go over a lot about what we do, and what, what we're looking at in the next year, as we enter in our 50th anniversary. So, I'm not gonna go over all of that, but I do wanna reiterate that we are here as a partner, in support of our local governments. Over the last 50 years, we've been successful in working with the communities to bring in over 150 million, and grant funds, to our region, and for Perry County specifically, over $24 million in grant funds, and that's over 50 projects. So, we look forward to continuing to work with you, you know, we are here for you, and we'll do everything we can to help you meet the needs that you have. And on that point, the other handout, the, one handout was just a frequently asked question, kind of describing who we are, what we do. The other thing I have is a project prioritization, as part of our work through the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration, every five years, we put together a comprehensive economic development strategy for the region, and part of that is putting together a list of projects, a list of needs, for all of our counties and all of our communities. This was sent out, I believe, maybe towards the end of November, so I'm not sure if you have seen it, but this is a starting point for the projects, this is from our previous... But this is a starting point for the projects, this is from our previous SEDs. Um, of course, some of these things have been achieved, some haven't, maybe they're not priorities or needs anymore. Um, so I would ask you to look over this, and the top sheet is Perry County, this is what was sent to you as the commissioners. I have included the communities, uh, Cannleton, Tel City, and Troy are included as well, just for reference, so you know kind of what they're looking at. Um, these lists are not updated yet, we're still compiling all of that. But I would ask, uh, if you look this over, add projects to it, take projects off, it's not, it's just overall needs. So it's nothing that necessarily you're committing to actually doing, it's just your needs. And we take this, we use it in the office, um, if funding opportunities come up, we kind of look through, see what projects might match that, and we get back with you. Um, if you are applying for funding through the Economic Development Administration, it has to be listed in the SEDs. Um, if you apply for any grant funding through the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, you get bonus points for it being in this plan. USDA Rural Development, if you apply for funding through them, um, they have a separate pot of money that they can go through on a national level if a project is included in this plan. So it is both useful on a regional level, but also helps you out through some other funding opportunities. So that's really all I have, if anyone has any questions, um, I'm always available, so.
We need to put more things on your list.
Yeah. We, we'd love it.
Because as opportunities come around, I wasn't aware that this was a determining factor with additional funding or how they figure, so it's critical.
Yeah.
Really is.
It is.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Nathan, appreciate you showing up.
Thank you.
Next item is Ant Island, it's an agreement for the GIS system.
Like I know I see her.
So, yeah, uh, this is basic data we would, we need for a smart city project for the city of Tel City. Uh, and so the, you know, main goal here is, is that each, each department can then reach out to, to each, each resident, um, individually, be by street, or by block, or then as a whole. So if then we were to say something as, uh, as simple as, maybe there's a water main break going on. Right now, there's no quick way to really get that, that kind of word out to residents, and so, uh, this basically the data is gonna help for, for then, uh, whether it be the street department, or the water, or the police department, to then see on the map. And then take it directly from this, this, this data from, from this map, uh, and then say, okay, now it's gonna be, this street's closed until, uh, next winter, or, uh, this is gonna be open at, at this time. Or maybe there's, there's, you know, maybe a festival happening, uh, next, next month, so.
So basically, you're wanting to use the mapping data on our GI, GIS system?
Yeah, so...
To use as the base for building layers on top of that to allow you to have different functions, whatever, based on that.
Yeah, so that, that would be useful for the city of Tel City, in that regard. Yeah, and, and so that, can you hear that now?
Turn it on, let's see what it made my ears sound.
Cool.
Is the green light on?
Nineteen persons.
I don't see anything, you know, it's not that.
Yeah, you're the I team now.
I, I don't do it with mics, I don't know.
But basically, I think the county has allowed this previous years, have they?
Yeah, so I, yeah, so I, I've understood that, uh... Thank you. So I've, uh, heard that, uh, this has been shared out, um, through this, this kind of similar agreement through the other companies, that they, they asked for it, and it's been...
We, uh, we currently share it with Antro, and they map their water lines on top of it, is what they do. Keeps them from duplicating everything that's already been established, and then they use it, we don't see it when we go on to the GIS system, but it's there for Antro to use. And then it gives them property owners where their line is, and then they can monitor a system where if they have a water leak, they know where it's at and, and the area to, to, you know, and, and tank levels. So they do this all in conjunction with that mapping system, so.
Yeah, and this will actually give you access to go and, and put on social media, the, the water, you're not gonna have water from this state to this state, or the water lines are down, or whatever.
Okay. Back off now, I don't know if it's working.
Everybody's got to talk loud tonight.
So, yeah, that's, that's the main, main goal there, and then, uh, including for then building zoning, it's gonna be very key for, for them to know that, okay, this, on this block.
That's, that's for the city of Tel City only, correct?
Yes.
Because they're the only ones that signed up as smart decisions.
Smart city, yes.
At this time.
At, at this time, but, but the goal eventually is that if then we, we can get it to our, for just...
The whole county, county.
That's the goal, yeah, we wanna show it first.
I think, uh, he's asking for an agreement, um, we got any other questions? So that probably takes action, in the case to allow him to do that, and then, and I guess for a year, I think that's what you're asking for, right?
For a year.
It's, it's just, well, uh, this is just basically to, to just release the, the data, whatever's there, yeah, so.
Well, we'd wanna have a start and a stop sometime where, for a period of time, and then you just renew it.
Yeah, I'm planning.
Yep, so...
Should we need an agreement to look over, or should we go ahead and...
It was there, I saw it to you guys.
Yeah, the agreement's in there, it's pretty simple.
Okay.
It was in the little packet.
Well, I'm good with it, so I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, three-o, go to work.
Okay, thank you.
I can see where it's working.
Fix the mic.
The next person on the agenda is Julie Dixon from the Animal Welfare Control Education.
I do know what that is about, if you want me to...
Because of a member that's not, that's what I think the note was.
Yes, there was a, Shannon Sturgeon was appointed to the board, and she has, uh, I think, maybe three years left on her appointment, and nobody's even heard from her since July. So they are wanting to, it would be a commissioner's appointment, and they are wanting us to open up an appointment for that position. And that would be with the Humane Society, may endorse whoever puts in for it. But what would two weeks notice?
Probably the first thing we need to do is formally notify her, wherever her last...
They can't, they've been to her house, or you could say, since her house now.
Last known address to, to make sure we follow up on that, tell her that it's been suggested, and then at that point, advertise it, I'm assuming for...
We usually, like we did in the past six weeks, rule of thumb, when we, uh, when we get to that point, you know, to advertise it.
There's actually nothing in the ordinance that states if you miss three consecutive meetings, you are no longer on that board, or four consecutive meetings, or two, or whatever. There's nothing in the ordinance that reads that, and that needs to be redone.
Yeah, I think it's basically at the pleasure of the, whoever the appointee body was, isn't that how it's written? So we have the right to, to take them off.
Right.
But we probably, I mean, and that's one thing I would like to see people that are appointed, that they actually participate. Because we wanna get the community involved, so...
So what do you propose us to do?
I'd, I'd find the last known address, send her a letter, and, and get it, um, return receipt, so we have evidence that we attempted to do it, then advertise the position is what I would, I would suggest, and then fill it, because we're trying to get that up and running.
Randy, how many, are you gonna go traditional, four, about thirty days at least? Because I looked at that timeline, and March sixth would be very early, so that's, you start to go out.
Yeah.
The reason I'm saying that is because as of now, as far as we know, the Humane Society is the only eligible organization that can make a recommendation to the commissioners. And I'm, I, I need to get a letter out to all members, all of our members, to try to get in those questions.
Let's stick to the, let's stick to that period of time, then.
About six weeks?
If you're okay with that, that way, he's got time, and everybody can be informed, and then you'll have to have some type of a meeting to make a recommendation, I'm assuming.
Yes.
And then, so that'll give us time to do that.
What, six weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just waiting for the commissioners to, if they officially put it in the public, so that we know that it's, because there may be another organization that is forming, you don't know.
Are you gonna take care of the letter?
Yeah.
Okay, and then whenever you get your card back, that it's undeliverable or whatever, advertise, that'll start the time.
Okay.
Let Jim know, and we need to get it up on the website, so that there is an opening.
Do we go six weeks from the night, or should she get that letter back?
I think it's back when we get the letter, I don't think the letter will take too long.
I'll go ahead and get that done tomorrow.
Yeah, if it gets, you know, that way, there's no forwarding address and no response, or if we happen to find her, and she says, "I have no interest," then we, then we proceed, so. All right, moving on, minutes of Ju, January third, twenty-twenty-three.
Yes, I provided you guys with the men, detailed minutes from November third, um, for your review.
I've got one question, Chris, and I don't think, I don't remember whether it was the end of December, or I think it was January. It made mention of our fuel bids for gasoline.
Mm-hmm.
And there's no action.
The twenty-ninth, there was no action.
But we went back, did we accept CNS's bid?
I think we did, because...
We accepted. Yeah, the twenty-ninth, we didn't...
They didn't bid.
They didn't bid, and then on the...
But I read through there, unless I missed it, I didn't see where we took a vote to accept it. It was on the twenty-ninth.
I remember that, what opened it?
There's two different ones. It was on the gasoline or...
It was just the gas, when I had one bid come in, we were just...
We didn't have a, we didn't have a bid on gasoline, but I'm thinking...
Was it on the twenty-ninth? We didn't have it on the twentieth, and we got it on the ninth? Fuel bids for the county, it was on the twenty-ninth?
It was.
Fuel bid was not, no, that fuel bid was not received, so that needs to be added to the third.
And that's the only thing I, I thought I saw in the, is the minutes that we needed to record that vote, um, for the gasoline bid.
Okay, so we can't do the third, right?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, we can, just adding that?
Uh, just to add the, uh, vote to that. So if somebody wants to make a motion to accept the minutes with the addition of the vote to accept the CNS fuel bill bid...
I have to abstain on that, because I wasn't in office.
On the third, you were.
Oh, on the third, oh, that was on the third, I thought it was the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, we did not get a gasoline bid.
Oh, okay.
We ended up getting diesel fuel and a lot of other bids.
Oh, okay, yeah, I remember that, some of them was on there.
That was a no-bid item, and then they came back in at the first meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, three-o. Okay, then what am I doing here, Chris?
Now you got the fifth.
The fifth?
I just did, um, remember the fifth, we went to the housing, or the animal shelter?
Oh, okay, that's the animal shelter.
Animal shelter.
All right, that was kind of a cut and dry.
Yep.
I didn't attend that meeting, so, uh, stuck in line at Rockport, Randy, just like I said, I'd probably be...
So with that said, I needed a motion to accept the minutes from the animal shelter visit.
Aye, accept. I'll make a motion.
And I'm gonna second that, because Randy wasn't there, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Randy, do you want to abstain from that?
Yes, yes.
So two-zero-one. Okay, now you're on, Chris, payroll.
All right, here we go, we've got payroll for January sixteenth, about a hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety, six-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. Do you want to do these individual?
Any discussions? Do I have a motion to accept it?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Oh, for a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three-zero, payroll benefits claims.
Payroll benefit claims, a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, eighty dollars and forty-three cents.
Any discussions? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, three-zero.
All right.
Kevin Herb, ADA.
Uh, so as was approved, um, at the January third meeting, that the auditor's office would absorb a lot of the administrative duties, um, within, um, of the administrative position, um, which in sense saves the county money. Um, but we did have the issue of the ADA in Title V, or Title VI information that I needed to look into. Um, I did find out that the ADA coordinator needs to be an internal person. Um, I had since, uh, the beginning of January spoke with Kevin Herb, um, and we went over, um, the ADA and the three-year, is on a three-year plan, and the Title VI, um, as far as, um, where we're at on that. It literally, within a day, um, Kevin was right on top of it, he literally has everything, um, for our ADA already done, and Title VI prior to approval. So, um, he's already been working with, um, Greg Hendershot on things, he definitely, um, hit the ball rolling for this. Um, as for this, I would like to, um, uh, with the, with the switch of, um, the funds from the administrator position, um, it did free up sixty-two thousand, five dollars and eighty-eight cents to the penny. I would like to ask that, bring to the, um, commissioners here to, um, whether we, um, do a stipend or add it to Kevin's, um, salary position, or hourly wages, um, to be compensated for his work within the ADA and Title V as the coordinator.
Comments?
I have one question, if, and, Kevin, are you planning on staying with the veterans' administration position long-term?
I've got nineteen more years.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I'm wondering, because if, you know, if, if you were to take this and, you know, say in two years, that you did not want to hold that position anymore, we would have to train someone else, and...
I mean, I would suggest maybe not put it into the salary, so just in case something did happen, I didn't leave, or something happened.
Well, you're gonna be here eighteen years, right?
Yeah, yeah, but you never know. But if it was already, if it was in the salary, and the next person that came in didn't want to do that, then y'all would have to juggle all that, so.
That was my, that was my question.
Yeah, the only thing is, we need to, we need to modify, and this will be for all of them, our job descriptions to reflect your new duties. Because, uh, that way, it's clear what our expectations are, what your compensations are, and there's not a... And Teresa was doing a lot of this without it in her job description, she just did it, she just did a lot of things, came along, so we need to bring clarity to that, so that'll all have to be modified, uh, what happens now. Uh, I'm assuming we'd probably keep that outside of his normal salary.
Correct. It's paid, it'll be, because remember, we only transferred the different funds to the auditors, so we've still got that money in the commissioner's fund. So that could just be a separate line item paid out of there.
Right.
Um, I do wanna say too, the reason I felt too that Kevin was a good fit, was he does deal, deal with a lot of disabled veterans, which goes... was he does deal with a lot of disabled veterans, which goes hand in hand with ADA and all that. So I just, and he was very open to do so. And I just felt as far as to be the coordinator here in the courthouse, he was the best fit.
Long as you stepped up.
We do it. So now what we have to recognize is that as part of the stipend and what we're doing, there's going to be additional payroll expenses associated with it. So the actual dollar amount will exceed this unless we adjust that amount down, just so.
I think we request it and send it to the council that we can put our support behind it.
They're gonna have to make the dollar incentive.
It's on the agenda for their Thursdays for your guys' approval.
So what we would have to do probably is add 20% to that. Is, in essence, what'll happen. We don't necessarily have to approve it, but we have to be aware of that with the payroll taxes associated with it and other.
So the thousand plus 20%.
Plus whatever that number is. You're gonna have to pay for the, for the portion of the Social Security, Medicare and that. That's, that's a requirement, so. Any other questions, discussions or comments?
No.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Three, oh. Kevin, looks like you're on board. Good luck.
Thanks, Kevin. Thank you. Appreciate it.
For the next 18 years.
Sorry, I sure will.
Next one's a quote from Lao.
Yes, super excited. Okay, so we are looking to utilize our financial software, which is with Lao. We are in the process right now of getting all of our department heads and commissioners and council members what we call remote claim access, view only. Where I feel this is gonna put a lot of information in our department's hands and our commissioners and our councilmen where they're not relying on me and my office to get them information. So each department head will have access to view their budget. So unless a lot of our department heads, unless they are keeping a individual spreadsheet of their budget, they are mostly coming to the auditor's office monthly and asking, "Where am I?" You know, kind of having us help them with their budget as far as where to spend, you know, where it's from. I think this will put a lot of information in their hands to allow them to have more control of their budget. Also, we'll be allowing our commissioners and council to have access at any time to view the budget. Also with this quote is the attachment. I'm looking for, to utilize the software to not go paperless, but to, in a sense, be able to have a visual for departments and our commissioners and councils. So in a sense, when someone brings in a claim form with their supporting documents, those documents will be scanned and attached to the claim within Lao. So then it's not a matter of going and having to pull a file if we need to look at the supporting documents or if the commissioners or councilmen need to look at the supporting documents. It's right there for them. This is just coming into the times, being a little bit more efficient, time efficient. So of course with that does come, come cost. I have become really involved with Lao as trying to utilize this software because we are paying for it. But, so they have allowed us, if we get permission, if you guys accept this, we will be one of the first people to roll this out. So instead of having to wait in line, we're gonna be one of the first people to be able to do this, which I kinda like.
Charleston lets us work through the bugs. She didn't tell you that part?
Yeah. We're gonna be pretty big. But in the long, in the long run, I think it's gonna help our entire courthouse be more efficient, each department, and have our commissioners and council have information at their fingertips instead of having to contact our office to get that. And I just think it's moving in the right direction.
And that's a $4,000 annual charge, correct?
Annual charge, yes.
And no other additional costs?
No. This is with training, setup, everything. So each department head and everybody will receive their own login. I will tell you that I use, call the help desk on a daily basis right now and they are super helpful as far as willing to walk you through things on the phone and have also been willing to come down and help you hands-on. So Lao will very much, I've seen that they're a very good company to work with.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but in essence, when someone submits a bill, you'll be able to go online and pull that bill up. Instead of seeing $1,257, you'll say, you know, "You bought this, this, this and this." Am I correct? So it won't be a question as to how, because a lot of times we see just the totals. This way you'll be able to look at the actual document. So if you want to look up what Steve's Bridge costs somewhere, you could find it.
It's countable.
It'll be broken down. So that's the advantages.
Yep.
Now, I think tonight, are we just looking for an approval because the council's gonna have to come up with the money?
Correct. I need the approval from you guys because it's going to be more than likely. Yes, I need the approval from you guys to move forward with this and then take it to them on Thursday.
For funding.
I make a motion.
For doing.
It's gonna make it a lot easier.
I'll second that motion.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Three, zero. Impala insurance claim.
Okay. We did have an incident with the Impala where we're gonna, we've got a quote from Carmen's Body Shop. That is where Greg Hendershot says we take the car. And the total is $1,656.40 of that. We have a $500 deductible, so we'll be paying 500 of that.
What year is that vehicle?
Well, let's look.
Do you know?
I'm pretty sure it'd be on here somewhere. Oh, 14.
14.
2014.
I'm gonna say less than 10 years old because I was here when they.
Okay.
I just have one thing to, on, it falls in with the insurance claim. There is not a protocol as to who to call when something happens, a wreck or just like out, out back here. I mean, I was really kinda shocked when I got the email from Greg Hendershot. And, and I'm going, somebody, there needs to be a protocol of who and what to do if you have an accident and it should be in that vehicle. Anyone that's driving that vehicle.
Personally, I think that you should call the cops and get your report and turn it in.
Well, yeah, that, that bill. That kind of helps, yeah.
And turn it in the next day. I didn't find out about this, which not like I needed to know, but I didn't find out about it till later on. So absolutely, I think that there needs to be, you know, a 24-hour.
I don't know if they want to call, what about Alan or who?
In the past, Teresa was kind of.
They got you.
The go-to person, then she came to the commissioners and by phone call, text or whatever, something happened. So we're kinda missing that link right there right now, so.
Yeah, and a lot of people don't know what to do.
Okay. We can do something. I mean, honestly, I feel if we get the, within 24 hours at the auditor's office, being the secretary of the commissioners, if I receive the report, incident report within 24 hours after it or whatever. So I'll get an email out and copy you guys on that as far as protocol, if there's an incident or anything. And we'll get that laminated and in the glove compartment house.
Right.
And like with the incident with the light pole up there, that was the right protocol to let the commissioners know, I think, what happened that night because we are in charge of heavy building.
Right. I sent an email.
And they did what they needed to do.
Yeah, Alan did send an email.
Right. But we just need to reduce it so everybody, there's somebody else who's unaware of it. They can say, "This is what I follow. Here's who I call," whatever, just so they know what to do.
Gotcha.
And we'll deal with it. So the insurance claim, I think the question comes down, and I've looked at this here with the car being the age it is and the cost to fix it. It looks more superficial to me than anything. It's still drivable. And we got a substantial increase on insurance because of a few other deer incidents and things like that that we've been fixing. I'm not sure, I'm not comfortable with getting the car repaired as a 2014 and being subject to a higher premium potentially come next year because they already deemed us pretty good this year. That's what concerns me. Because we could have, we're at the beginning of the year and we could have another incident, two of them, you're guaranteed an increase. Other thoughts?
Do you think we could fix it on our own and save from the insurance? Or just not fix it at all?
Have you looked at it?
I haven't, no.
It just looks like out on that rubber bumper on the front of it, it looks like it's berated somewhat with, it hit the fluted block. I couldn't see any problem with the building. But because of the rough texture, it just kinda ate all that paint off of that. And I suspect if they're gonna repair it, they probably have to buy a new rubber bumper because it's rough now. And so that's where they're.
It's cosmetic as well.
It's cosmetic from what I saw.
If it's still.
How many miles? Do you know how many miles it's on?
Um, 88,160.
It still has some life in it, yeah.
Yeah. It, it serves its purpose.
It was just cosmetic. I mean, you know, if all, everything else works and it's legal to drive and it will take your insurance up again, they'll hit you with another.
Discussing the company, the county vehicles brings up a question that I wanted to ask. If we, we schedule the both the Impala and the Tahoe out in our office. So if the Impala or the Tahoe is available, a county employee, if they're going for a training or something like that, they are supposed to use the county vehicle if it's available. Am I correct?
I think that's how we set it up, that ton. And if it's, if.
It's unavailable.
And they, we pay monthly, Jim, with their personal.
So if the county vehicle is available and they choose to drive their own vehicle, can they get mileage on that? Based on the notes I read, no. That if the county vehicles are available.
I can't see where they would.
I, the, the notes that I read, that if, if the county vehicles are available, you're supposed to use the county vehicles. The only time you're paid mileage is if you, if the county vehicles are not available. If you, if the county vehicles, vehicles are available and you just choose not to use them and drive your own, you're not reimbursed mileage.
I think we set something like that up. I can't completely recall.
I'll bring it up, okay. I just didn't know.
If you could research, because I'm thinking the same way of what you're, I had read that, the same thing. If we want to change it, modify it or something, some people.
It also, I think, I don't know if we put that in there. We said it also has stipulation if they live out in the county, if they're going north, they don't come back in and get a vehicle. But I don't know.
How long they're gone.
Yeah.
You know, if you're gonna be there three days and somebody has already had a scandal, you know, the last day or something.
Why don't we get that policy out and see what it says?
We're just guessing now.
We could have a discussion after we get a little more educated to see how we want to address that.
So what are we gonna do about the insurance claim?
Claim. That's the question.
I'd say if it's just cosmetic and it's drivable and it's legal.
If it's like around home, you get something fixed, you'll probably hit a deer, so.
I mean, that's, that's what's gonna happen. Maybe it's gonna keep our insurance rates going up again.
Yeah. But on the other hand, you don't want county employees running around and look like a tall junk neither, so. But we probably in the future, not, maybe not this year, but we ought to be looking at replacing it.
At some point.
Yeah.
Putting it in the budget for the council.
Yeah. So, Becky, is that a motion?
I make a motion not to pay the claim. Just to leave it, like I said, if it's with the stipulation, if it's legal and it's just cosmetic, the lights work, the radio's mechanically, mechanically sound. Not pay the claim.
You got a motion? Do I have to?
I'll second it. I'm good with that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero. Moving the administration, administrative office computer.
Yes. With the auditor's office taking over administrative duties, a lot of things were having to bounce back and forth from the administrative computer or bounce back and forth to, from our office to that office to get things. I know I actually spoke with Randy a little bit today in regards to it. A lot of the things on that computer are saved on the draw, on the actual computer, not on the T-drive. So I'd like to get a lot of that stuff off and moved to the T-drive instead of on the hard. But, so if we can't move that computer to the auditor's office, I'd like to have, at least have remote access to that computer in the auditor's office so I don't have to keep bouncing back and forth.
What that amounts to is we can link it so she can have access to it and then she doesn't have to run it back and forth across the hallway in order, you know, the push-button safety stuff. And what I talked to her a little bit about is, is we're looking at some security upgrades and things of that nature. So if we put a lot of effort into doing something with that system, we may find ourselves abandoning it shortly with something different. So that's why I said.
Two separate computers in there. That computer right in here is the security computer. The push button for the security is on the.
On that one?
On that one. The other one, I've not even got on that one. The other ones were all the information.
All of Teresa's information.
All of Teresa's.
At the desk.
At the desk.
Some way where we can have access till we get the details sorted out rather than moving it. I'm not sure with the phone system how that's all been wired either because we just went through that too. So that's what I was talking to Chris about was just seeing where this, let it lay, get her access to it so she doesn't have to. She's clear at the back of her office now.
Yeah.
So it's a long way over there just to do some simple tasks. So if we can link them, then she won't have to actually be at the.
So we'll just leave it set where it's at.
And they just link in our office.
Yeah.
I think I do that. You guys are okay with that?
That'd be good.
Okay.
Caitlin Steen claiming the prosecutor's office.
Okay, so we had tabled and extended her 2022 contract for the month of January. So I wanted to put it on here for us to revisit for February because it's coming up. I did do some research and Caitlin in the past receives a W-2 for her hourly work and has received a 1099 for her cleaning of 2,400 a year. So these, I know we have to keep things separate with Caitlin because she's paid out of a grant, two different funds. The, I can't remember the funds, remember, pre-trial version and.
And a grant.
And a grant.
It's a grant or pre-trial.
But this comes out of the commissioner's budget. So if we want to put this on where her workman's, she's covered on her workman's comp, then we need to add this into her salary and also take out, add more for Social Security and all that, benefits.
And what that does essentially for us, because it's such a nominal amount, she would never buy insurance or coverage because it'd just be too expensive. But again, we'd have to add that into the job description, similar to Kevin's, so that it's included. We can address it the same way as a stipend-type deal, but we need to put sufficient amount to pay her benefits in that same process. And that way there's an insurance coverage. If she, for some reason, had an accident or something happened, it wouldn't be a liability to the county that we hired somebody that's not covered.
Yes.
If everybody's good with.
It's still gonna come out the exact same fund that it's coming out now. It'll just basically be.
We have a county cleaning fund for the courthouse and that's where the money was put. We have a county cleaning fund for the courthouse and that's where the money was put.
Correct.
So we just pull it out of there and turn it into a salary, a stipend that we take taxes out of and change your job description also. If everybody's okay with that, that one, I want to get a motion on.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Chris, you've got that, you're going to stipulate just like Kevin's?
Mm-hmm.
And whatever the additional for the little benefits.
Yes.
Taxes and that.
Yes.
COVID policy, number H.
Okay. Um, I looked back and we, the county, the commissioners, there was never any, any changes or anything made to COVID policy as far as when COVID was heavy and everybody was required to stay at home for ten days. On that, and we currently have an employee that has COVID right now. So I just need guidelines here as to where we go as far as if we're continuing through 2023. When someone has COVID, they're paid to stay at home or if we're retracting or rescinding that. So that's why I put that on here, because there's not been any change as far as right now with the state. There's no benefits of unemployment if you're home with COVID. There's no guidelines as far as entities having to do any type of provide pay or anything. But it's at the county level right now where I just need to know where we.
I haven't seen the policy, the COVID policy.
Right, I remember when they did it, probably right when it first started.
Long time ago.
Yeah. What they did was, you know, if somebody got COVID, they just, they were off basically two weeks in most cases. And they just compensated it for them. And I'm thinking maybe you had some care's money or something that subsidized that and.
Well, I think the government was helping with that.
Yeah.
At the beginning, then we just carried that policy once.
Well, it's one of those things that there's not been any house cleaning, keeping up there. And that policy, you know, Chris asked me and I said, as far as I know, it's, it was still in effect. I don't think the commissioners ever rescinded it.
No, it's still in effect.
It's never rescinded.
So my discussion with her was, I mean, we have now someone who actually falls into that category. It's our fault. We should, we should have changed the policy had we, had we wanted to do it. But I mean, my thinking is going forward, the COVID in most cases is, is not as severe as it was. So it was, it's more of a flu issue type deal. So if we want to revisit that and rescind that going forward, I think we need to honor the current situation because we didn't do our job.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a simple.
I agree with that, Randy. Uh, maybe we ought to put a.
Clause?
A, a date somewhere in the future from this point on.
No longer is going to be handled in that fashion.
Yeah. So I don't know if we want to make that denied or just maybe then do it another night or a day or whatever.
If we're in agreement that the COVID policy, we need to lift it, then I, we can make retro, or active tomorrow if we want to do that. I mean, but I still think we need to honor the current situation because we have not rescinded that policy until we take action, so.
I would like to maybe wait until early spring. Once the weather breaks, people's out, they won't be asked to get COVID as, as maybe not as much. So maybe March fifteenth, April first, something like that.
The only thing is, is you're treating kind of COVID as a special disease. Whereas, you know, some people get the flu and really be down and they wouldn't be recognized as a person that gets compensated with their time off. I think we probably should have rescinded it six months ago. I had it, I think you had it, didn't you, Randy?
Yeah.
It really wasn't bad. I mean, you got, if you've had it here recently, it really is not.
It's about the same thing we have every year.
Yeah. It's just I can have a sinus infection and be about as severe. So, so the severity of the disease has dropped off substantially. So to continue to treat one disease as a specialty where, where you have others that may even be more severe and, and you don't have that treatment. I, I would think we just want to rescind it and.
I don't know that too. If you want to do this, Kevin, Monday or tomorrow, it doesn't matter.
Why not just do, just make it effective right now where you don't have three or four people.
Place is supposed to have a written COVID policy. It needs to be changed. So you have to have a written COVID policy, but you have to change the rules however you want it to be. So each workplace in Indiana should have a policy on.
Is that a state requirement?
I think so.
Specifically to COVID?
Correct.
That's something we need to look at.
That's where we need our attorney. And we'll get to that later.
So it should fall under the company that I have for, we moved it to, if you were out more than three days, you kind of went to the FMLA rules. So you applied for FMLA or you could also apply for your short-term disability so you need to pay that way.
And I don't know how we handle that, but that's a requirement too. On other issues, for instance, if somebody gets another severe disease.
If FMLA.
Yeah. And so we are coordinating with that.
I have a question. Are you only talking about rescinding where you would get paid if you have COVID?
Currently, currently right now, the way I, I understand it's written is if you contract COVID, you can be off with pay for, I think, two weeks, I think was what I read. And without any consequences to your personal days, your sick days.
Vacation.
You know, anything, you're paid outside the norm. So it was made as an exception is what it was and it has never been changed.
Hospital added where if you had sick days, you had to use them. But if you didn't have sick days, they'd pay you.
Yeah. So I mean, that's just what the county has going.
The last time I had COVID, I was, it was told that I can have five days off and then five days with a mask afterward.
See, in most cases anymore, the, the new stuff is they come in and if you test or whatever, it's about five days anymore. Originally at the beginning, they were wanting you away for ten or thirteen or something. It was an extended period of time. And that's when that understanding was put together by the commissioners and it's just never been changed, so.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure what you were talking about.
Yeah. And it was just an exception to the current.
Wouldn't you have to follow the CDC guidelines on, on the employees in here?
Um, I'm sure we would, but I don't know there's any specifics that require the county.
I don't know if they changed it from five days.
Oh, yeah, as far as, as far as.
Five days mask.
Yeah.
They just still have to follow that, but what we're talking about if they get paid or not.
They get paid.
Compensation, yeah.
That's what it is, talk about compensation.
We are still experiencing it in the jail at times. We arrest people, we test, everybody comes in there. And sometimes we do run into an incident where we do, as well as my deputies are going out in the field and come in contact with these people that are not telling us. So we have a very good chance of taking it. I have one deputy at this time that has it. And I just, I'm actually just a little careful about just doing away with it right away.
What happens if your, your deputy is exposed to a severe case of the flu and he gets it?
Okay. I'm sorry, I just wanted to say that.
See, and I, and I understand where you're at, Alan, because you, they're not, most criminals, that's not their top priority to let you know I'm sick. But again, see, if this is a policy we want to do as far as something like that for all communicable diseases, then we need to rewrite it to reflect that rather than one specific.
I just wanted to say that, just, you know, we went through a lot with COVID in our jail and we had, or every one of my correctional officers ended up getting it at one time. And you guys took care of that, I appreciate that. So I was just hoping if it spikes back up like it has been.
I think if we end up getting into another severe, I don't know what that might be, but if it does, that's something we need to revisit.
I just felt I should say that though.
Yeah.
A good option to put in the policies is just for them to listen to their healthcare providers. You say three days and you say seven days. I don't know if I'm diabetic or overweight, it should be up to their healthcare providers at the time of the meeting.
Want it safe to come back?
Yeah.
And as far as that FMLA and all that will kick in, the whole question is, is, are we paying these employees to be off for ten days if they have COVID? That's, that's the question that needs to be answered because, like you said, we've got employees that are being out with flu and they're not getting paid for those days and they're having to use their sick days. But if you test for COVID, based off of us not rescinding this, if you're out with COVID, you can get paid for ten to fourteen days. So that's where I'm just asking how I'm going for this.
I think where the CDC has part five days off, then you got to wear a mask for five days. That's what I thought it was.
No, the only question I have is, do I pay?
How are you going to compensate?
Do I pay?
And does it impact their benefits? That's the thing. So.
How about we just hold up till we figure out with the attorney what's the proper way we can handle this?
Do I pay going forward, just basically as we're going, as it still stands?
You'd have to.
Have to.
Until, until you change it, yeah.
Your policy, yeah.
Especially you're telling everybody to, uh, on a ten-day vacation, get you a home test, get test positive, turn it in, get it ten days off.
Thanks, Keith.
I mean, if it's, that is like you said, it's more if you throw, then it's time to put it into.
Well, I agree with you, Keith, but I think in the past you had to go through the health department or a doctorate office to get, to get that.
I think if, if you're going to extend, if you're going to say let it go, then you need to add word flu into it too.
I'm not saying let it go, I want to do the right thing with the attorney's advice, what we need.
Day's the only thing that needs to be cleared up. And the pay don't need to be authorized by an attorney.
No, but.
The policy, I agree, that you need to make sure, but the pay needs to go to.
Didn't the state, didn't the state ease up on that? I mean.
I don't know that the state ever mandated that we pay any individual who has COVID without impacting their, their benefit package. I think the county actually had some funding available to help subsidize that and they just adopted that because at the beginning it was pretty nasty and, and they put that in place back in 2020, I bet.
Yeah.
And, and it just never has been revisited. And we still have it in 2023 on the books that a COVID person is treated different than a person with a different illness. And whether we want to get everything back on the same equal playing field or not is the, is the question.
It could affect you ten days from now. That'll clear out anybody who's got it right now. Cover that. Ten days from now.
I would suggest they're going to stay in the CDC. That's what I'm thinking Indiana is already.
Well, I don't think, we're not going to determine where, the point that you're capable of coming back. That's not our place. That's the doctor's decision and everybody's a little different. What our decision tonight is, is are we going to treat it different than any other illness? Because currently, if anyone, a county employee gets the COVID, they get a period of time, ten days, I think, off with pay and no consequences to their sick days, personal days, anything. They just end up with two weeks additional pay without the requirement to perform any tasks for the county. That's only for COVID and that was put in place 2020 when the disease first started in its pandembing phase. So the question today is, is whether we're going to take away that pay issue and put it on the same platform with all other illnesses.
I'd like to see the old policy to see if it says that you have to go to the doctor and to get tested.
Well, but if we're going to take it, if we're going to take it back to, if you get sick, you, you use your sick days, then we're not going to become the, the entity that checks whether you went to the doctor or not. Because if you want to take a few days off, you don't feel good, you're going to take sick days, you're going to take them off, you're going to stay at home. You're not going to come in, so we're not going to be the oversight to confirm that you actually have COVID if we take away this bonus program, the compensation for having. So that's our question as to whether we want to continue the, the funding as it has since 2020, specific to COVID.
Can we revisit this at the next commissioner's meeting?
Yeah, we can do it anytime we want.
So Becky, you're going to allow, she wants to do.
Come on, Sherry. Sherry, we've got.
I'd like for someone to name one company that still pays people to be off for COVID. Name one company, just one. Because they're on the research.
Barry County.
Barry County, that's it.
I agree with Kevin's saying you can check with the state, I mean, because you don't want to work any rules. They fall back to the county and.
I think it's strictly on compensation. The state employees that I'm aware of are, I don't know whether they ever afforded that opportunity to, to be off.
What they did, they, they got, like us, when you get paid for any, if you hasn't had any, they'd say, from the health nurse, county health nurse stating that you.
You actually had it. And I.
You can go take a test and.
Yeah. And I'm thinking that there was funding provided, I don't know whether it was federal, I think's where it came from, in order to pay for that wage, um, which has dried up.
What's the company's got to pay back to pay their employees when they're more off?
Right. The county actually, yeah. And there was the same thing with the, with the private sector during that period of time.
I think, like you said, the policy maybe needs to be addressed with pay and stuff.
But I mean, it's, depends whether we're going to continue to say COVID is a special disease and that's outside of the other diseases you might have.
And how, will that affect the pay?
Yeah. Well, it's whether we, that just makes it special. If you get COVID, you get two weeks off with pay. Kevin?
Just one more thing on that. I would say too, in the past, most of us that who have had COVID in this courthouse, we've taken our computers home and worked from home. So it ain't like we're just sitting at home putting our thumbs, getting paid.
Right.
We're working from home, doing our job too.
And see that.
Working through it. And then also too, we are working with the public here. We come in, we put ourselves in front of the public, they expose us, we get sick and then we are the ones that, I'm saying like that.
So the everyone, the teachers, nurses, the nursing homes also, and there's no, there's, again, they, if they're sick, whatever, it falls under their sick pay. It's not.
And see, that's where we are. If, if, you can be as ill with the flu currently as you are with COVID. But if you're fortunate enough to get the COVID, under our policy, you can get two weeks off. The flu, you're stuck. You're going to have to use your sick days. So the question is whether we want to continue the disparity between different diseases. That's, that's all it amounts to.
I'm not defending the pay. It doesn't matter, but I'm saying.
Alan, you're exposed just like Alan's group is, the prisoners that are here.
The sheriff's department, the jail, you know.
The people who deals with that. Okay.
Her OSHA standard is each company that has ten or more employees should have a policy for COVID, a written policy. So whoever is responsible for your OSHA and your state and here at this facility, you should have a written policy for COVID.
Exclusively for COVID?
Correct.
But it doesn't count the money?
No, they're, no.
It's just a policy.
Usually it's just a policy.
Your policy will show all those roles and it kind of puts it, I'd be happy to share with one of ours with you.
The money actually is left up to each entity or company or whatever.
And you, we need to write it in the state.
The money's our only discussion.
Right.
Now, we do need to look into that to make sure we're in compliance, but our insurance people should.
I think Chris Galton did something with the policy. I'm, I can't be a hundred percent sure when this.
To write that.
We'd have to look back, see if there's anything there. I'm just thinking he did because he had to, to get everything lined up to do what we had to do right at the beginning.
We had to have a COVID policy to our work.
Yeah, we have the COVID policy.
So you've got.
So, yeah.
So we're.
Does it pay on it?
I don't know on that. I think it's the time off that they have to.
Right.
Be away from work, away from anybody.
The strict question is here, are we continuing to pay them two weeks if you get COVID without an impact on wages, vacation days, sick days?
I say no.
No.
Okay. So I need a motion that we're going to rescind it. When am we going to do it, tomorrow?
What about someone right now that is currently?
Has it? I think, I think we have to honor.
They have to honor that.
They need to be grandfathered in.
Yeah.
Yes.
We, we are, yeah. We're not going to knock props out from under them.
Twenty-fourth.
Okay. So is that the motion for which one of you?
Randy.
Who's going to second it?
Me.
Okay. All those in favor?
Me.
Aye.
Three zero, we're going to rescind the. All right. Three zero, we're going to rescind the COVID policy as far as compensation, beginning tomorrow. And currently honored.
Anyone with COVID now.
Yeah.
But we need to make, look at that policy. It could go back down to follow with the guidelines. It could be five days and wear a mask for five days.
But that's really not the question right now. We still have that OSHA. The question is only, cause we, we have a COVID policy. I mean, that's the, our, our insurance people do that. So we've done on that.
Rachel, you're up.
You don't look like that. Okay. I'm Mary Kay Elder and I'm on the election board. Good news. We're not gonna ask for anything that's gonna cost you any money.
That's good.
Okay. When we started out, we started over there where the court records are at now. They moved, they brought us some shelves and that's where we put our voting machines. Okay. We moved out of there and we've got a room over there by the court. Okay. Jared Boucher building. Okay. Double locks. She's got a key, I got a key. Okay. Our election is growing. You know that by the absentee that we're getting in here. So Lynn, take the. Okay. What we have is each year our state officials institute laws to provide security and equality for our voters. And part of those laws govern the amount and the type of equipment that we have to use. And in the last few years, the amount of this equipment has multiplied. We've got E-poll books, the regular poll books, uh, we've got printers, signs, rope, extension cord, instructions, all kinds of small essentials that we have to carry, pens, pencils, papers, signs. And then last year, we had to add the VV pat machines. Because of these requirements, we must obtain bigger external cases. And what I just handed you, uh, this one here, this is the new cases we're gonna have to go with that contains both the voting machine and the VV pads. Now, back in the room where we have the storage, we have three shelves that has these voting machines on there. And there are 55 machines back there.
Yeah.
They're stacked in three rows. When we have to go with these new ones, these you can see here are 42 inches long. That means we're gonna have to take out that bottom shelf. And because these weigh 50 pounds, we cannot put them up. So we're gonna have to build shelves all the way around the outside of that room now to try to hold these. We currently, it's full, all three shelves are full. This one whole end is full of the VV pads machines. We have literally got like 20 of them right now. We've got to have 55 of them, so we have to buy more. Then this side, we have one table and we have the boxes that we have to use for absentee ballots. Here, we have a storage cabinet that we have to keep our ballots, uh, our seals and important stuff that is not allowed out in there. Because of this, that room is getting much too small. And we also have the totes that each inspector has to take. In that tote is the extension cords, the equipment, the ropes, the signs, the ones they have to put on the wall, all of these. And because the VV pat machines in a lot of areas don't have the extra outlets, we're having to get more of those big extension cords for that. Because of that, uh, we, we've really had a problem. Now, what's in the tote is not required by law to be under dual lock, just the totes. So, right now, because there is no room in that back room, those totes sit in that open storage room next to all the Christmas decorations and the, the shredder, cleaning supplies. So everybody under the sun is through there and, uh, even talking with Mary Kay Rachel. Okay, the forms that are in those totes have not been signed yet, but they're not the kind of forms that you just want laying out for everyone to get. So now, on this second page, the, the picture here, we've had to go with these larger totes because now we're carrying, uh, when, when we go into an election, we take the voting machine, we take the E-poll pad machine, we take a printer, and we're taking the VV pat machine. We're having to take four pieces of equipment. So we're having a problem with storing these and storing them securely. So what we are asking for is that we might have the administrative room, which is not in use right now, for the election and for storage. Um, and because of the situations, we're, we're asking for this room. The other thing is, the advantage of this room, it is connected right with our election room. This little room right here that we use for election, on voting day, and Rebecca, I think you were back here one day, there is a minimum of four to seven people in that little room on election night. Because they, the microphone has to sit there with the computer and it's so cramped that the little bitty desk that we have, the, um, the, the machines put on, the computer and, and the little card reader for absentee ballots, the printer has to sit underneath and there's like a two inch gap between the printer and the computer for them to reach in and get paper. The microphone, I can't even get his feet underneath of it. It's right there by the, both those doors so everybody's in and out and in and out and in and out. And after we've been there since five o'clock of the morning, we're tired. There is absolutely no place to sit down in there because microphone has to have the chair to work the computer. So here we are and we are so crowded. Whereas if we could use this room, it has that access, it would give us the room so we're not walking on top of one another, bumping into one another all the time. And we would have some room in there to store the totes where they could be secured. So this is why we're asking for this extra space. Uh, if you would please, uh, it would really help us. And if some of you will remember, several years ago, there was a picture of Mary Kay and I standing here. We spent, what, hour and a half, two hours going over the books, trying to find the mistake one night. We had to do it out here because there was no room back there. So this is what our plea is, is that we might find that, that we might have this room to use for this. And on top of the stuff we do carry because of COVID mandates and all, we now have to carry all the cleaning supplies. We've got to carry cleaners and rags and pins and, and all, and, and extra masks and all this stuff. So this is why we are asking if you would please consider our appeal that we might have the administrative room for our use.
Would you be moving everything over here into there?
There's no, it'd be basically the storage, there's, and not all, not all the lofted equipment because that storage room has to be dual locked.
Okay.
It would be for the totes, so we would have room to sit down. We would also be able to have our board meetings in there so there wouldn't be a conflict between, between. And many times when we wanna have an election board meeting, while all the commissioners use the room, if somebody else moved in the room, we wouldn't have that conflict. When we do the public test, we wouldn't have to be taking the room here. We would have enough room in there to conduct those tests.
How many, uh, people early voted this year, percentage wise? Can you tell me roughly?
There's a lot of early voters.
There was.
Fifty percent?
Uh, probably a little more.
More than 50%?
We had about this, we, I think we had a little, a few more absentee than what we did earlier. Yeah. We had about, about 150 more early vote than we did at the polls.
So you, so there's more, okay. And here's where, this is kinda off subject. But part of your problem is having a lot of voting machines, a lot of requirements to take them out, go put them in place, bring them back, secure them, all these things require. I know Spencer County went to a, a, and I don't know the terminology, basically where I could show up at any polling place and vote. Okay.
And I mentioned, we eventually want to get to that.
Okay, with that said, we're, we're now looking at, we're trying to find more storage for more voting machines and maybe we need to look into shrinking our polling locations, but make it a uniform polling location that I can stroll in from work at any location and vote. That would lessen your requirement to store, lessen your requirement to set up, remove and all this. Because in essence, as, as time goes on, you can see more and more people early voting, absentee voting and these things, and I don't think it'll change. So with that said, we'd lessen the storage needs. Now, as far as the back room here, I'm not, as one, necessarily ready to give up the room. We have not had the assistant and Chris is now taking on duties through her office. Kevin's taken them on. This is kind of a, something we're working on. If something happens and we decide as the commissioners that we wanna go in another direction, then we've given up an actual finished office to be used as a storage facility. Now, I understand where you're coming from and if there's some other areas in here that we can do something, but a finished office is to be a prime location.
Well, we want it for more than storage. We want it for, so we're not walking on top of one another election night, so that we are not in competition with you or anybody else using this room for our board meetings, so that we can conduct our, a public test and that, and so we have room to do those things. Uh, in that little room, put seven people in that room.
And, and we are, we are.
It's nice.
We're gonna discuss it a little later tonight, yeah, about taking this room and turning it into a public room so we can live stream all public meetings. And this will be available so that the public can participate. They don't have to show up and watch you with all your public voting requirements and that. You can actually have access to this room and it'll be recorded and live streamed. And that's another thing, keeps the transparency up so that everybody's aware of everything that's happening. So I think this will be a room that we're gonna encourage people to use going forward, once we get our system in place, if we so choose to follow that.
Randy, we started out, and the state has come on us, we started out with just Lynn and I, Rachel, and the microphone guy. We had that room to tally the, uh, tally everything that came in. Now, we can't do that now. So our early voting team is back there. So there, that added two more people. There's no room. You know what that room looks like.
Yeah, I know the size of it.
Size of a postage stamp.
Yeah.
And it's not big enough. I mean, we're elbow to elbow. And I, and our little counter that we do run the cards through for absentee, our little reader is about this big square. I stood in a space like this, he fed it and I took it out. And that's how we work in it.
I'm not gonna say that you, you don't need to look at other options. Um.
Might you suggest another option?
I, it, once you share all your needs, I would like to visit other areas of, of the courthouse and what we might do. Because you're catching me kinda off guard right now. But, but I do, you know, whenever, again, yours is an election type thing. We have two a year. I understand that. But, um, I, I just, I wanna utilize the courthouse, if I could, a hundred percent of the time, in the finished areas.
Well, we only, we're not here just two, two times a year. We're in here.
I understand that. You've got given different times of the year that you have to carry out different tasks.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Kevin?
We had a lot of discussion today at work about all this. And one of my suggestions is, that room has one, two, three, four, five access points. So it's very unsecured as a room. It's got, that entry over there can be, from the outside can be entered, that over there can be entered. So what we were talking about today, being that that room right there feeds into that room, put a wall up right in the middle of that room and make that section over there for election. They can lock it, nobody will be in there, no traffic will be in there. They can come, access it from that room right there. That'd be their section, storage, everything. That office is huge.
There's options, there's no question. And, and the main thing is that it needs to be determined, the area that's needed for basically bulk storage, you know, items that you take in your tote that you just, because you don't have to have a room as nice as this one as a storage facility. So we've got areas within this courthouse that, that I think we can make accessible and make it work. I don't necessarily have the answer to that, but I would ask you to provide us kind of as you have your needs so we can look for opportunities and then we'll, we'll get back with you to see what we can do. We don't expect you to stand in the closet and work in a corner. We really don't intend that.
It has been very cramped and walking on top of one another, especially the multitude in and.
And I understand as the voting rules keep changing, it just creates more and more tasks.
We get more equipment.
Yeah.
The VV pads have been added to us next.
And, but I would encourage you to explore this. I don't know what we have to do, but if we could get to the point where we could have uniform voting throughout the county at any location, I think we could lessen the amount of machines, lessen the cost and make, maybe make it more accessible for those that, for instance, they live out in another part of the county, but they work at the foundry. They could slide into any location and tell city and vote and then go home. And they, I mean, those kind of opportunities, it just creates.
But then you're gonna have to have internet and all this stuff.
Everything, nothing's easy.
I know.
But if we can do it, we can set it up and make it more convenient, less burdensome on you, less costly to the county as far as the required equipment. It's, it's basically a win for everyone.
Well, we have looked, we have looked into that and one issue is that a vote center cannot be, uh, we cannot have a vote center here. We would have to take it somewhere else because it can't be in the office where the clerk's office is. It has to be out. So that's an issue. And then to find someplace that will be open for that whole time or whatever, uh, that's willing to let us go in and stay day after day after day for a while, that's not our option.
My understanding, right, but, uh, those things, and my understanding is that on election day is when you can go in any one of them and vote. It's not.
Vote centers are open for more than just election day.
And you have to have vote centers in order to have this ability to vote anywhere?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So you should bring in that. You don't, when you said about people coming in, going to work and then being able to vote, you can't disblue all the people that live out that way that go other areas.
Correct.
Or do not leave their homes other than to go vote. So.
Those people are actually sending, they're afforded an opportunity for 30 days to come into the courthouse and vote and/or they can do it by mail. There's a lot of opportunities, you know, to do that. So we, we can't, okay, but I, I mean, but we can't come in here and probably solve everyone's issue. If you truly wanna vote, people manage to get there. They really do.
I think their main issue right now is.
Storage.
Storage.
And, and a, and a, for our meetings and so we're not sitting on one another's lap all day. We have to do something. And election night.
Right.
That's.
If you decide to do the half ball, I knew it would add a helping you guys a lot.
Oh, half.
Yes, it would.
I would love that.
Give you the space.
That'd be more secure too.
Yes.
A lot more secure.
Yeah.
Is it, gotta be your room totally or can it be a multi-corporate room back there? Could you use it like on election time and, and, and we still keep it open in case something doesn't work out with administrative assistant? I mean, we gotta keep that open for, Chris might just say in six months, I don't want this anymore.
The stuff that we keep.
We'll come.
The stuff that we keep back there in the storage room, um, that's outside of the dual lock is the stuff that goes, like, the stuff that goes in the totes, um, that doesn't have to be under dual lock. That's something that's not security wise. Uh, even though that big storage room is locked and there's only a certain amount of people that have a key to that room. Um, but, uh, those are the only things that we keep outside that room, plus all the cleaning supplies and everything. But, I mean.
You know, Kevin, I'd like to pursue that idea of what, I mean, maybe it's.
I'd like you to.
They're talking about cutting a portion out of it.
I know, I know.
Just cut it in half.
It, uh, I think what we need to do is get some type of an inventory from them.
Oh, yeah.
And then visit that part of the building or this part of the building.
It would also help because she has election materials, some stored here, some here, some here's and here's and here and here. One place, put all the election material in a file so it's all in one location. So she's not having to run to this room, this room, this room, this room.
Having structure.
Yeah. It would make that also much easier.
Or calling her and say, hey, I need in the election room. Can you drive here from Ritzo? Sorry.
And I've done that many times.
I don't know how big the totes are that have to be on.
I don't know how big the totes are that have to be on double lock, but there is that closet in that most, that room too, that it'll be double locked because you've got all the totes.
Oh, the, yeah, it's pretty big size.
Yeah, that closet.
Yeah.
It's a pretty big room and then it'll be double locked, that door locked, door that entry.
Yeah.
So Lynn, what I'd ask, can you give us just basically an inventory? You know, how many of these you've provided this? How many you're going to try to store and totes and stuff to come up with an idea of the kind of space and then we're looking at.
These are the ones that would have to be stored there. Those others have to be back in the locker room.
These have.
And we've got to totally redo that room to get those.
But we need to look at the whole big picture. So a room you're locking with double locks, is there something we need to address there? Or is it good or is it, is it too big, too little?
It's getting tight.
Our micro vote vendor, whenever they came out with these new machines, he specifically looked at me and he said, I want to talk to you after the meeting. So we talked and he said, I'm not real sure your room is going to be going to hold all this.
So any kind of information you could get from, that's a provider that's going to be what for 24? Is that when you're going to change services?
We have every machine has to have the BB pad on.
By 24, by 24. So we need to consider that when we go through this research, that we're not building something that won't, will not work in future years if we're aware of it today, so.
Rachel, do you want to put that together in an email and like send that on?
That inventory of everything and measurements and.
Measurements.
Kind of, you know, I've got 15 of these totes. They're this size and you, you know, and we'll see what we can come up with.
Work with you on that.
We have them downstairs, but we have 55 of them, big ones. They're all 50 something.
Of these here and all the totes.
No, that one.
These.
That one there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're down to the commissioners and I'm going to plead ignorance here because you don't have this back sheet.
It's on the back.
There you go.
Same paper, we're doing double sided.
Okay, good, good job, Chris. Two things we should have added to it and I missed our ARP funds.
I put that on the council. You sent it to the council?
It is, but we also have, the commissioners have to okay them. So they need to be on both of them because we have to approve them and the, and the council has to approve them.
Understood on that, that's my thought.
Okay, and the other one is we went through the process of discussing opening the courthouse back up February 1st. And I understand they had a security, you guys had to get together and you're comfortable with doing that and that thing, and we probably need to record an action that we're going to open it back up and that we've done that, just so it's in the minutes, so.
Yeah, I think the concern was, and Alan might be able to address this, was the deputy out there and he said he could, uh, he's got a way to manage that, I believe. Is that correct, Alan?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to add that, that one before the commissioners here at the last minute, probably not following protocol, but I just want a motion and a second on opening the courthouse February 1st to.
Over the.
What, what used to be normal business hours.
Eight to four.
Yeah, back when we, before the COVID.
Not closed until lunch, right?
Do what?
We're not closed until lunch.
Right. You're just going to work through each officer to figure out which, how they're going to handle it and just to provide that service, so.
Now, Randy, that don't apply to the court side, correct?
They're their own people, they're mandated by the state and it's just, it's the same as we did before.
Why make a motion to do that, Dan?
Got a motion?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero on that one.
Do it February the 1st.
February the 1st. Then the other thing, let's, I sent you a copy of the audio video and let me describe that just a little bit to you. And what we've got proposed now is it'll be a mounted camera. It will be the correct focal length to pick up the entire group here. What you're going to have is a cabinet with all of the equipment for the audio inside of that. These four microphones will stay on the system, everything else will go and we won't have that issue with that one again. Move the other speakers to the back corners so they don't pick up through the microphone. We'll have a mixer in there to adjust it out. You can actually program the camera to fit whatever width you wanted. If we want a narrower width because we have fewer of us, it can be under program one. The council larger could be program two and beyond that. But it'll also have a computer that processes all these frames to keep the streaming flawless. In addition, the proposal's here for a ceiling mounted projector against that wall, or we can go either way, that now state law allows you to participate in these meetings if they can see you and they can hear you. And under the same system, the recording will actually include anyone that's remotely participating in this. So it'll allow people that's, you know, if they're ill or they're outside of the community, they can still participate within the activities of this. And that's what we're looking at. And I think that if we go through this and they talked about this on the voting end of it here, if they have their meetings that need to be public, then we make this room available to everyone that's required to have these public meetings so there's a record of them. It, it's not an inexpensive system to do this. If it's something we want to pursue, then I'd say we send out an RFP and we get bids on it and we see where it is.
Randy, are you suggesting that the boards, all the boards meet here also?
Everyone. Every public board that uses tax dollars.
This is fair to serve the people.
Yeah, I understand that.
And then this way, we will have excellent audio video of all actions taken. You'll clearly be, you know, we struggle at times with these recordings. And what we want to do, and you'd be surprised how many people have came up to me and I'm sure the other two also, well, I couldn't find that video and, or we were out at the armory there for a while and we were, we were, we weren't broadcasting. And they ask us, well, what went on, what happened? They, they actually sat down and participated and what we want is community involvement. And if this brings it in, and with the amount of boards that we have that have public meetings, the cost is going to be minimal per meeting once we go through this process. Now, if we're the only ones using it, us and the council, then it's going to get a little more expensive. So what I'm looking for is a consensus from the commissioners to pursue this. I'm going to go to the council and say the same thing to them. And if everybody's on board, then my next step would be is to send out an RFP and see if we can get some bids on it and see where that takes us, so.
I think it's a good idea because it's complete transparency. If you want to watch it, you can. If you don't want to watch it, you don't have to. If you want to attend a meeting, attend a meeting. But it will be for all, all meetings. Is it going to be required that they be at, all these meetings?
I, I would think that what, you know, what it does now, some of the people have meetings scheduled that just doesn't work with their, you know, it's like Randy was sitting in line, maybe he could have got on his cell phone and participated from line up at the grain facility.
That's what you're going to do.
So, but I mean, it's going to give you the option to do that. And what we want to do is have the community participating and if there's a meeting that's scheduled at an opportune time and the individual can phone in and participate, then more people are active. And the more we can get people active within our community, the better off we're going to be. So that's my thinking on this. I want to throw that out there to see if it's something of interest and we'll pursue it and see where it takes us.
I think, Randy, that regardless of what happens with the camera system, the meetings need to be here.
And that will be, I think that, that if we do this and pursue this, then we need to, as a council and commissioners, just basically whether it's an ordinance, a resolution, whatever the requirement is, say they will be held here. And, and that way, anyone that chooses to see a parks board, for instance, can see what, what the plans are, what's going forward, what the discussions are, and you'd be surprised how many great ideas will come out of the community because they're informed.
Well, this just be the county funded boards.
County ones require open door with tax dollars. So past that point, we'll see where it leads us and how the scheduling goes and where it could be used. This is a public facility and if we can, we can even, I mean, we can use the same camera system in here to have Zoom meetings, educational things. There's a lot of options there, so.
Can that be used on election night?
I mean, anything you want to stream, you can.
It would actually make it better because if you recall, the last election on the wall and if moving that screen would make it better.
This isn't the greatest behind us, the way it's set up.
It was bad, but yeah.
This way, we've learned, the whole, I mean, this has been a learning, there's no finger pointing going on here. We've just learned from, from mistakes and thankfully that's a good thing. But if we take it to either end, whatever seems more appropriate, we can do it and then we can see it up here behind the counter and the public can see it and, and then it'll be recorded. Part of the upload will include that, so you get the whole picture when you watch one of these, so.
I think that could also help with, since we have the window policy, like our trustees have to take out an ad in the paper, pay for, meaning just to prove that this is a open door, we had something like that in the policy, we can all stay eventually for not having to run the ad in the newspaper saying we're having to be, we made it, but across the board policy, this is our meeting.
It'll give you records, what it'll do. I don't know, I don't know that you can get around the newspaper advertising.
Meetings.
I know, I know what you're saying and the, as, you know, the amount of people that, that actually subscribe to it, I mean, it's, but it, state law, I think, will have to be modified to take away that requirement because, but, you know, getting it up, getting it posted on the different media here, anything that gets our people participating and informed, I believe is a plus.
You brought a good point, Pam. Would that be the trustee east of Idrie? Meetings would have to be here also?
Sure, have them. I mean, I don't know, I mean.
They're recorded, that would be good.
Yeah. But it actually, it gives people an insight. I, I've never been to.
I've heard about that sometimes when I was on the Idrie meeting, we talked about support relief, some individuals, so I don't think we want that in a public meeting.
I don't know that that, you could take an executive session on that or either don't refer to them by name. Assign client A, client two or whatever and have that discussion. And then you can get around, because a lot of times they do that in economic development, that they do, do not identify a prospect, but they refer to him as some name or some number or something to that respect, and then they could have an active discussion. So we'll have to figure out what, I mean, there'll be, we won't do it perfect and once we get it, actually, if we go forward, set up, we'll have to tweak it.
Well, you could also do training, couldn't you?
Absolutely.
A lot of training that they have to go to here.
If you can stream it, they can participate and it'll, it'll be an opportunity. If we could ever get a lot of our training streamed rather than paying for the trip plus the hotel, the meals and everything associated with it, it would be a plus.
Well, you know, the, going wherever and back, you're taking a chance, you know, the way it is today, look what happened at Walmart in Evansville. I mean, you know.
Yeah. So if so, I just basically want the okay to pursue it, you know, to supportive of it, but I.
Get a prize, we'll see what.
You're okay with it, that's the next step? I'm going to go to the council, make sure they're on board and then we'll RFP it and see where it takes us.
Okay.
Continue the motion to get an RFP or something.
Do what?
Do this as a motion or no?
Let's do it as a motion so that it's on record. I just need a motion to, with council's approval, to pursue an RFP on an audio video system. Put it out for bids. I'll make a motion. All right.
I'll second you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, oh. Okay, the county attorney is the next one to list. Sent you his contract. Basically, it's what we had, the council had allocated for his services. He has a background in government somewhat. He's concerned about the amount of time that it might take, but he's agreed to do it this year, see how much time it takes and see where we're at. He's, he's kind of, we've had Chris on here for, I don't know, 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, whatever.
Well, I remember.
And so this is new to him and he's not done any work for Perry County and I don't perceive it to be a problem, but he said, let's do it a year once and we'll talk about it then if it becomes an overwhelming burden or not.
It leaves him neutral.
Yeah, so he's willing to do it this year under that contract, so. Any discussions on that? If not, I'm going to need a motion and a second to approve his contract and hire him.
I make that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. His name is Andrew Foster.
He'll be here for our next meeting?
Yeah, he needs to come up and meet everybody.
I need to put him on speed dial.
Put him on speed dial. There's, there you go, budget. Everybody's wanting to see you, put you in jail. Okay, the last thing that we should have included.
I'm Andrew's got.
Yeah.
Regarding the copier scanner that's in the current administrative room, I would like if you guys approve it, if it's by office. Currently Kevin uses it in June and obviously Dave will have access. But mine is 2007 and we try it on and off. So somehow it's still working. So we could focus on this base glass and, you know, we got it over to my office. It's not very good. And like I said, Kevin is juniors, so he'll be able to use it.
I didn't have time to put that on the edge of the, I might kind of put on the.
The only question I would have is to make sure how it's hooked up, whether it's hooked up through the internet. Okay, so then it will be, need to be reprogrammed to wherever the new location is?
That's who you're business, to make sure that. They're on a contract that way.
Yeah, they're under contract with the printer, but we have a new phone system that's fiber optics, so it's going to have to be addressed so that it recognizes where it is. Your phone systems won't quite function like the copier does. So with that, reach out to Greg Jarvo to make sure that the communication is established between where it is so that. You can, but what you have to do is because that's a different phone line in, in your office versus the one in Teresa's old office, it's going to be looking for it. Now, your phone systems program, you can carry it around, plug it in, but a copier, I do not believe has that feature. I may be incorrect, but I think it will have to be addressed so that if there's something coming through, it'll actually pick it up, so.
I'm just wondering if that's a different.
It's got a scanner, I think, in fact, it's a multi.
It doesn't have a fax.
It's not faxed.
So it may not even be hooked up to a phone line.
Just a scan.
Are you, we're going to reserve the right whenever we hire an administrator to come back in there to take it back away from you though. How's that? So is everybody okay with her removing that copy machine line? Okay, let's.
Get the person.
I don't know if we need to vote on that. Okay, the last thing that didn't get included now, you, you guys did get copies of these, Okay.
That's my bad.
This is ARP's things. I was going to go through what the ARP committee recommended. That's for the council, we need to publish that. What that amounts to is the first thing we need. What that amounts to is the first thing we need to do is the commissioners are required under the agreement to approve the ARP just through, makes recommendations. And so what we need to do is approve those and then it needs to go to the council for their approval for funding. So I want to kind of go through what each one of them, what we're doing with them. The first one is Forest Canton, which is the redevelopment's housing project. And the group had recommended, the ARP committee had recommended, funding them at $300,000. And what that will do is play a part in the infrastructure, depending on the earth moving and things to that nature, using that out of ARP funds. I'm just going to go through them all to make sure you're comfortable. If there are some that you are uncomfortable with, we can pull them out. We can vote for what you are okay with. If there's some things that you're not comfortable with, we can pull them out and we'll see where this goes. The Derby Community was also suggested that they receive $50,000. And this is, they're currently in a project of driving piling, making a retaining wall, a boat dock. And what they'll do is spend this on additional enhancements for their park, which they're associated, this falls within the requirements for ARP. We also made stipulations on that one, that they seek Region 15 input so that if there's grant opportunities for their project, that we can use these for matching funds because then we can get more bang for our buck. And Nathan, I've reached out to him. He's agreed to sit down with these individuals from Derby and go over different opportunities that they may be able to expand the amount of money available. The next one, Steve was in here and he asked for funding. My anticipation is if it is approved, that the commissioners would provide oversight on the spending of the money. And also he would solicit bids on the equipment that he's going to purchase. And we would review that and accept them and do that. So that's how the group anticipated that to be handled. The next one on the list was Cannleton School Corporation. They had a project that is the Myers Elementary School. It currently is, the floor joists apparently is separating from the walls. That is the oldest operating elementary school in the state of Indiana. And the ARP committee suggested funding them in the neighborhood of $120,000 to put that building back in good shape, hopefully. And it will be then an asset to Cannleton and the county as a restored school that's relatively old. There one again that we request that they reach out to Region 15 because there's preservation grants that are available that could make that a much more successful project if some of those funds could be secured for that one. Antro came to our group and this was one area that we all expressed interest in. Antro has areas within the county that are underserved or not served at all. And they came in asking for substantially less money from engineering studies and a mapping system. And they represented both Antro and Troy Township. The group decided that we don't necessarily just want to put money in and do engineering studies. We want to have people served. We felt if we can open into the county additional areas, there'll be opportunity for people to build homes, locate here, and become part of our community. So the group decided to set aside $500,000. We have had some discussions already with different entities and we intend to pursue it farther. There's Oakwood potentially, USDA, several granting opportunities where we can again leverage this half million dollars as matching funds to try to make a bigger bang to get water service into these underserved areas.
How about accessible water?
Plausible, that you can actually, most people, believe it or not, will not build a house with the idea they have to make two trips a week to come to Tell City to haul water to their home. Now, we've had very much success with fiber optics being taken through the county, but we have to get water to them. It's crucial. And they're anxious to participate. They've identified six or seven areas. And we're going to now go into those areas and start seeing how much interest is in each one of them. And it's one of the challenges is the national force. But I think we figured out a way that we can get actual grants to get us through those national forces without costing us a tremendous amount of money, if it pans out. And our other legislative people are all participating with this project. So they're on board with us if we can get it pushed through, both at the state and federal level. So that was that suggestion. Paracircuit Court, Judge Lucy came to the committee and requested funding because of the accessibility to her half-door system that's easily breached in two different locations and how they come and go. And she had a proposal in trying to make her area more secure. So we, as a group, funded that for $57,000. With that said, I think we'll probably look as a county as to doing other things within this building other than just her side and possibly expand it. Because it's like having the front door locked and the back doors wide open. So those things, you know, we'll be yet to determine what we do. Girls' youth softball came in and they requested funding for a practice facility. They currently are in the Swiss plywood building and the understanding is they will no longer be allowed to stay there. And they've kind of been bounced around through the years. So they came in and asked for funding to be placed on a Tell City, the old Pony Lake field. And we, as a group, decided to fund them at $81,000 with the stipulation that it's acceptable, it will be put on Tell City property. And we will have to get an agreement hammered out with Tell City so they have use of this facility for a given period of time. And the discussion was 20 years. So that we don't fund a facility for girls' youth softball only to find in a couple of years, they've changed their mind. So that we make sure that the dollars go for where our anticipated need was. The Tell City School Corporation has some transportation needs. It's in excess of $300,000 and we propose to fund them at $100,000. The two items, the next ones you see there are the town of Troy and the Troy Fire Department, which is still under discussion. We haven't taken any action on those yet. Teresa Cannibur came in front of us for the prosecutor's office. And you know how she is, she's kind of thorough. So she went in there and started looking at not only their copy machines, but their computers and a lot of their office machines and it's very dated. So she came to the committee asking for $25,000 to bring that back up to kind of equal to what actually is out here at the courthouse now as far as age of computers and that. So that again will be put out in an RFP if this is all approved and we'll take bids on their requested equipment. Brian Hurwick from the hospital came and he asked for an additional $150,000. They're building two rooms in the clinic that have, I believe, negative pressure is what you call it.
They're building three rooms, one negative pressure.
Okay. And what this amounts to is so that if you do have COVID or some other type of disease that's easily transferred to the next one, this room actually will be kind of isolated so that it's not distributed among not only the rest of the building. And he asked for us, it was a $450,000 project and he asked for $150,000. And if I understand correctly, USDA is also granting $150,000 on that project. Because it is, it's right in line with the COVID and the pandemic and what was related to it.
He also said that would be put out in public video.
And I'm thinking he's probably already bid it, but I don't know that for the case. There is, but that's where it's at. So that sums it up. They add up to, I think, like a little less than 1.7 million. What we currently have put out, are committed to and have it appropriated, if we include this amount with it and we actually fund Troy's requests, we're going to probably be in the 2.7 million, maybe just a little more than that committed, which will leave us a little less than a million dollars yet in that fund, if we go with that. Now, with that said, that'll be our discussion in our next meeting as to what we suggest going forward. But if you saw today, there's some, there's some opportunities through the health department, surplus of funding, state of Indiana, but it requires a 20% match. So it's big dollars, half a million every year, but we'll have to come up with $100,000. With the new infrastructure laws, there's going to be additional money available. So there will be opportunities, potentially, you know, this other million, we could leverage it in some fashion to get more dollars back home. So that's kind of an idea of where we are. I'm asking for comments. If you're okay with this here, I would ask for an approval. The council yet has to do it. What we will do is just like we did the other people, we awarded money, we will draw up a contract with stipulations that they follow, what they represented to our group and that they understand the requirements of ARP funds and the treasury's rules. Now, we won't do that on anything that's county affiliated because basically we've already reverted all that money to the county. So it's just like us appropriating another dollar to be spent in the county function. So we won't necessarily, but we will, as a group, we discussed requesting multiple bids. So that we give everyone not only a chance to participate, but also get the best fair price that we can get the work done for. Any questions?
Only query, I don't have a problem with any of them. Randy, I got a question with the schools. Did Perry Central apply for anything?
They did not apply in round two and thank you for bringing that up. Because I knew that question would come up. Perry Central, through their vendor, applied in the first round, okay? And we funded them. It was back, it was under the mental health aspect of it and they wanted to get additional support into their community for that. But rather than the school corporation apply, the actual vendor that carried the task out. And we did fund that for them.
Okay.
Because I, because as soon as you start seeing the names and that and I'm thinking, it's like we left out one school corporation and that's not the 10. They didn't come at the second round and ask us for anything. So we only, we put it out, we thought whoever has a need will show up and ask. Neither Cannleton nor Tell City showed up in the first round that was targeted towards mental health, small businesses, nonprofits, they didn't show up. So they were not funded in any respect at that time. So thanks you for bringing that up. Because I wanted to make a point of that because I didn't.
At least they're all.
So.
We can take them all at once.
If everybody's comfortable with them, then we'll just basically approve them and then we'll send it on to the council for their input approval or whatever they want to do. So all I need is a motion.
Since you're the new person on the committee, why don't you make that motion?
She didn't participate on any of this.
No, I didn't participate on any of this. I don't feel, I have to tell them.
I'll make a motion and approve, okay?
I'm going to second it. Rebecca won't.
I can't.
You can't too?
I didn't participate in any of this.
You just now did. Randy wasn't involved with it anymore. Sorting this out, he's just okay with what we're going to do with it.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Say aye.
I said aye.
Three oh.
Okay.
It's tough. With that, I think we're done. If I get a motion to adjourn, we'll go home.
Randy, I got one thing to add.
Hold on.
Next meeting, I'm sorry, but I got a conflict. You can have it without me. I don't want you to, I mean.
For the next meeting.
February 6th.
Yeah, you want to, it's not on our agenda, but if somebody publicly has something to say, we're more than willing to listen.
Your next meeting will be in the evening meeting.
No, it's early morning meeting.
Early morning meeting.
We started our Monday meetings in the mornings so they don't come.
I'm going to mix it up.
On the election day, it's where our council is. Is there any reason that they can't change that?
I'm going to go after this.
They got this. They shut down the election.
Did you?
They don't have how long the election, they do the early voting.
Yeah, 30 days.
So could they not use that?
Okay. At some point, my whole fault, yeah, my whole fault was essentially this room. All of these public.
I got to answer this question here. I got to ask my commissioners.
You know, we didn't cut it off for a month.
Are you a member of the Southern.
Then we have to turn around and address how we could, you know, get them. And I don't have an answer to that. But I don't have an answer.
Asking for a grant.
That's some of our challenges.
With the roundup news, you're.
It takes it up to a dollar.
Okay, you participate in it.
Yeah.
Okay, so she's done. Okay, I'll change that answer. Yes, thank you.
Yes, I did.
They're an LLC, this amount. So we can't mandate them to be here.
I'm just.
We can, we can, the commission, because that's used a hundred dollars. So.
This.
That makes, we'll see where that goes.
I'm going to do my.
It's compared to that door. She was just, she was asking about utilizing.
We're just. It is something.
One of our.
One side of the road is getting presented, next side of the road.
If we set this room.
She can't, she got it because it's on the ground. I can't get it.
You will get it, yeah. You'll get it, yeah.
So we need to.
It's frustrating. It is frustrating, but that's the stake that the rules they have to go by.
You're thinking, that's just something I don't, I don't know.
I understand.
Yeah.
But see, most of the, most of the.
I mean, we got better fiber than everyone. People have that real air in the rock.
But most of the.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, see, the only thing you could actually turn your day. With what you come up with, I probably got two. And as I look at it, I think I'm sending the salmon now. All you need to do is.
Oh, yeah.
Keep moving around.